Since we've published to commence at 7:00 PM, we're going to start promptly and go ahead and start moving into our agenda. As a quick housekeeping matter for those members of the, we'll say, the studio audience, right? Members of the public that have logged on that are participating in the meeting, the Newburyport zoning board of appeals meeting via Zoom. I will take a moment to just introduce all of those members of the board and staff who are in attendance. And then we will move through our published agenda and I'll walk through very quickly sort of the format of our evening's meeting. We have a fairly short agenda, but we want to make sure that for those that are just logging on for the first time, everybody has an opportunity to be heard. We will start with a role call and normally in a, in a meeting, if we were having it in person, we would, we would be taking the role in a different way and our secretary would be reading the members of the ZBA. But here I'm going to just read them and I'll ask members of the board, if you could make sure on the bottom left of your screen that you click unmute of your mic. And if you could just simply respond if you are present and we will, we'll start by taking the, the role call. Mr. Mark Moore.
Here.
Mr. Delisle.
Here.
Rachel, Ms. Rachel Webb. I don't see Rachel logged on just yet. We'll circle back. Mr. Ken Swanton.
I'm here and I think I saw Rachel on the attendees list, so hopefully she'll come across.
Okay. And Mr. Walter Bud Chanon.
Here.
Okay. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm here. We've got one, two, three, four, five members in attendance. And Andy, do you see, I see Rachel logged on.
Yeah. You unmute yourself?
Great. Rachel, if you can unmute your mic and just respond, you're, we're just in the process of taking a roll call.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, we have six members in attendance. Every member can vote this evening, but the voting members will, let's say we have six, one, two, three, four, five. All six of our board members are in attendance. The five voting members, let's see. Do we, do we know, Andy, who, which of our, which of our board alternates had voted last time? Was it? Was it? Actually, it's only Walter is our associate. So it looks like we've got all of the members will be voting. So the voting members this evening will be Mark Moore, Stephen Delisle, Rachel Webb, Ken Swanton and myself. Walter Chanon is our associate member and won't, won't be voting this evening, but participating in all deliberations. In the event there's a conflict of interest. Is that, does that square with you, Andy, as well?
It does. Thank you.
Great. Okay. In attendance, in addition, in attendance, we have Mr. Andy Port, our, our, our planning director here in Newburyport. Caitlin Sullivan, our, our Plant City planner, as well as Gretchen Joy, our note taker. And we've gone through the, the role call. So for members that, members of the, of the, of our community that are logged on and listening. The way the Newburyport zoning board of appeals will, runs its format, especially via Zoom, it's a little bit different than an in-person meeting. Just as our published agenda sort of scripts out, we, we have a roll call which we've just completed. And then we go into our business meeting where we will, we will approve the minutes from our last meeting of seven fourteen. Sorry, our last, our last meeting, which was back in June. We will then go into two matters which are part of the business meeting, one of which is twenty Union Street, a discussion on, on just proceeding forward on that, as well as a, an election for a new secretary for our board and a new vice chair. We've had the departure of one member, which has created a vacancy upward, and so we just need to fill those spots. After which we will go into the public hearing. We only have three matters that are going forward this evening. But the way the, the hearings are scripted, we basically open up each hearing with a, a reading of the description of the application. And so with respect to each hearing in sequence, we'll start in that order. We'll read the, the name of the applicant, whether it's an LLC or represent, or whether it's an individual represented by an attorney, law firm, engineer, architect, et cetera. The address and then the specific subject matter of the, of the petition being sought by that applicant, whether it is an appeal, a request for a variance or a request for a special permit, et cetera. All of that will be described. We will then hear from the applicant, at which point we invite an applicant or applicant's representative, attorney, architect, engineer, designer to speak on behalf of that application and present to the board anything and everything you wish to present. Mr. Port, as the sort of, as the moderator of the meeting, will be able to move through slides so that everyone, including the, the public observing and other participants, as well as the board members, can see each slide in terms of materials that are being referenced by the applicant or anyone else. As we, as we hear from the applicant, we will, we will wait for the applicant to conclude their presentation. At which point we close that part of the public hearing and we ask for input from the, the members of the audience. In this case, the virtual audience. We first sort of cycle through anyone who wishes to speak in support of an application. At which point we ask you to please click on the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. And in doing so, your mic will be opened by, by Mr. Port and you are invited to give us your name so that Gretchen Joy can take your name down as well as your address and then whatever you wish to say. After we go through the entirety of the, the virtual room on anyone who wishes to speak in support of, we then go to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Same thing applies. Please just unmute your mic, raise your hand, unmute your mic and then you will be, you'll be recognized and you, we ask you to just give your name and, and address. If you're not sure whether you're pro or against, we just ask you to please just feel free to pick a side and, and let your, let your thoughts be heard. It doesn't really matter which camp you come in on, as long as your, your thoughts are part of the deliberations and the conversation. After we complete that, those speaking in, in support, those speaking in opposition, we then close that part of the public hearing and we go to a section of the meeting called questions from the board. This is when members of the Newburyport zoning board will be able to ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's representative, architects, engineers. They will also be able to adapt questions that were posed by members of the audience. So, so don't worry if you, if you are voicing a sort of a question on how your question gets posed to a specific party. The board members will be looking keenly toward trying to adapt questions that might be posed by members of the audience that, you know, that remain questions in their mind and they will reframe those questions or maybe just simply repeat them. So the questions from the board will go through all of the members of the board who may have questions. After which we will close that part of the public hearing and go to deliberations. Deliberations is the section of any public hearing where you get to hear us as members of a board think out loud. We essentially deliberate and think and contemplate and question one another, each other. We may circle back to anything that we might have heard from the applicant, the applicant's representatives. We may dovetail on a question that was posed by someone speaking in support or opposition. This is essentially an out loud and in full sort of transparent view opportunity for everyone observing to, to hear us think out loud as we move through the material that we've been presented. After that deliberation period is over, we then close that part of the public hearing, at which point I, as the chair, will, will elicit a motion. Under the Roberts Rules of Order, all motions are made in the affirmative, even if that's not ultimately how the vote plays out. So don't worry if you hear a, a member of the board will have to, in order to move this along, they'll have to make a motion to approve the application. That doesn't mean that that member has to vote in the affirmative. It's just how Roberts Rules of Order brings us to the next stage. A motion is made by a member and then seconded. Once it's made and seconded, we then have a vote. And the vote requires at least four members of the voting Newburyport zoning board of appeals to vote in the affirmative in order for that application to, to be successful. So with that, we, we've kind of walked through exactly how this goes. We can move now to the next matter on the meeting agenda, which is the business meeting approval of the minutes. Does, does anyone have any comments or questions with respect to the minutes? And if not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Mark Moore. I didn't see anything that I would, that I would flag as a change. So I would be willing to make a motion to approve the minutes of six twenty-three.
Seconded by Stephen Delisle.
All right, the motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Delisle. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll go through the, the roll call to just get your vote on the minutes. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
I was not present for that meeting, so I'm not sure how my vote should be.
You can abstain.
Abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chanon.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is one, two, that's five in the affirmative. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving to the next matter, we have the matter of twenty Union Street. Andy, this is referenced as a discussion.
Oh, my apologies, Chair. I'm not sure if we perhaps looking at a different agenda. The, the first item we have, after the election of officers, which I assume you may be postponed to the end of the meeting. We have four sixty-fourth street as an application.
Correct. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I'm not looking at what you have up on the screen. I was just, I was looking at what was on the website. So I, I think I'm looking at an old version. Okay. So then we are next moving to election of officers. We have two, two, two officer spots on the board that need to be filled. So we'll begin with vice chair and secretary. And in this exercise, we merely need a motion and then a second to nominate someone for each, each of these two posts. And then we'll go through a roll call on each of them and we will, we will establish who's our new vice chair and who's our new secretary. So starting with vice chair, do we have a motion and nominee?
This is Stephen Delisle.
Or volunteer.
This is Stephen Delisle, Mr. Chair. I'll move Mark Moore as vice chair.
I'll second that motion. It's Rachel Webb.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore and Ms. Webb. The motion is made, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Delisle and Ms. Webb. The motion is made to nominate Mark Moore as the vice chair and it's been seconded. I'll call the roll and just please respond in the affirmative or negative. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chanon.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Moore. Or should I say, or, or should I give you my condolences? Welcome, welcome to the, you get, you get to, you get to have more responsibility on, on the zoning board of appeals. Moving to secretary, do we have a motion to nominate a member of the board for secretary of the Newburyport zoning board of appeals?
This is Mark Moore. I nominate Stephen Delisle.
I'll second that motion. It's Rachel Webb.
All right. Mr. Moore has nominated Mr. Delisle as secretary and Ms. Moore has seconded that. We'll call the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chanon.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries. And Mr. Delisle is our new secretary. Thank you both for, for being voluntold, right? Is that instead of volunteer, voluntold?
Works. It works.
That works. We'll move now into the public hearings and we will start with the first matter that is continued from six twenty-three. I'll just read the description and then we will ask to hear from the applicant. This is the, starting opening the public hearings of the Newburyport zoning board of appeals, the matter of Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architecture, continued from June twenty-third, twenty twenty, on the property located in four sixty-eighth street, docket twenty twenty dash zero three zero. A special permit for non-conformities to demolish and rebuild a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home. May we hear from Mr. McShara or anyone who is here to speak for Mr. McShara?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This is Ryan McShara from Red Barn Architecture, eighty-four High Street, Ipswich, Mass. And we have before you guys tonight, an application to demolish an existing, single-family residence and to construct in its place, a new, single-family residence. So the lot itself is non-conforming. It is small. It's, comes in at four thousand six hundred and forty-two square feet, where eight thousand square feet is required. It is also lacking in frontage. Eighty feet is required in this zone and the lot only has fifty-five feet of frontage. The existing structure is also non-conforming with, with side and front setback, non-compliance. So the side setback on the west side, where, where the rear of the existing building is, is as, as little as two point three feet. And then our front setback to our front deck right now is nineteen point five feet. So we're looking to reconstruct the single-family home. And what we're going to do is bring the, the new building into compliance with all the setbacks. And we're proposing to build a two-story home. The first floor will, will feature parking below the building. So here's our, here's our ground level architectural plan. You can see the steel, structural steel coming down from the building above. Stairs going up to a deck on the right-hand side of plan and stairs coming up into the building in the upper left-hand corner of plan. So if we flip now to, I think, page thirteen of the drawings, you can see the proposed front elevation. So this would be standing on sixty-eighth street, looking at the site. That, that deck that I mentioned on the right-hand side with stairs going up to that deck is one of the entrances. And then on the lower left-hand corner of the drawing, you can see the stairs going up to the first floor. We've also established for you the average grade line of the building. And then also the mean height of the roof to show that the building height is thirty-two feet, which will be in compliance with the height requirement for the zone. And we also have information on the existing building. If you guys would like to see photos of the existing building as well as elevation drawings of, of the existing building. So here's our existing building. We've got the view from sixty-eighth street. The west elevation is the one in the upper right-hand corner of this drawing. And, and that is the one that is two feet plus or minus from the lot line. And then you can also see on the view from sixty-eighth street where the deck comes and wraps around to the front side. That's where we're plus or minus nineteen feet from the front lot line. And we'll be improving both of those conditions to bring them in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Was that, was there, was there anything else that you wanted to discuss as part of the application?
I don't believe so. No, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it open to public comment and questions from the board.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So having heard the presentation of the applicant, does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? And again, reminding you, just please unmute your mic, raise your hand. And please give your name and address.
Chair, I'm not seeing anyone who's interested at the, at the present time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the application, same, same guidelines, please. Seeing, seeing no one raising their hand in opposition, we will close that part of the public hearing and go to questions from the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair. It does look like someone has raised their hand from the public. A Jen Blyler, I guess.
Excellent. I'm going to go ahead and just reopen that, that portion of the hearing. And if you can go ahead and unmute the, unmute the mic for, who is, who's raised their hands?
Okay. I don't know how to do it.
Looks like they may have lowered their hand. Is there, is there a Blyler in the public who is interested in speaking?
Yeah, this is John Blyler. We're next on the agenda and I think that was just a false alarm.
Okay. Thank you.
I apologize.
All right, thank you. No, no worries. Now, now you know, Mr. Blyler, that your, your hand raised button works. That's good.
At least my wife does.
No worries, no worries. Okay. Then closing that portion of the public hearing, we will once again go into questions from the board. Any members of the ZBA have any questions for, for the applicant or any questions about any of the materials that we just?
This, this is Mark Moore. I have a question for the applicant. And just help to explain if the footprint of the building is changing?
The footprint of the building is changing. It will be getting larger, but we will be increasing the footprint by less than twenty percent. So we'll be in compliance with the wetlands overlay district. And we do have that calculation if need be.
Oh, thank you. That was good. And I'm guessing by note, and this is just because there were, there were no comments either way. There've been no letters of port or anyone in the neighborhood that, that contacted you in, in favor or against when they were notified of this?
Not that I'm aware of, but I do know that my client, Holly, one, one of the owners did reach out to the neighbors to try and drum up some support. We did not, we weren't able to receive any formal receipt of support. But I'm, I'm told that several of the neighbors were in support of, of the application. We, we just couldn't either get them to be here or, or get a written statement from them.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rachel.
Oh, Mr. Swanton, it was, it was Mr. Delisle. You, you go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I guess my question, this is Ken Swanton, was I think you indicated earlier, you were trying to get the setbacks into compliance. But when I look at your table of before and afters, if you will, page two of two, it shows the setback, side B setback still is at ten, is going to be at ten point four feet when it should be at twenty. So I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what you meant by trying to get your, I, I understand some of the others improved, but that one's still a long way from, from being in compliance or am I reading this wrong?
No, that, that L was filled out that way through discussions with the zoning office. So within the zone, we are allowed to reduce that side setback down to ten feet in accordance with section XXI G four A. So we, she, the, the zoning enforcement officer wanted us to list the dimensional control at twenty feet, but, but said that it is acceptable to, to bring that down to ten feet. So our, our side setback is at ten point four feet.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So you say, even though the table says it should be a twenty, you have other indications saying ten is okay in that case. I, I guess my other question has to do with the FAR. You know, the FAR ratio, the FAR ratio in the PIOD is at point two five. And currently the house is below it at point two one, but you're looking at going all the way to point three six. Is that another situation where you have kind of a special number you can get to or is point two five where you're supposed to be?
So it's my understanding that the FAR can be granted to be increased by special permit through this process. And, and we have actually revised our design from the first submission. So, so our current FAR is at point three zero. So while we are still increasing, we, we feel that point three zero is, is a pretty reasonable request, given the size of the lot that we're working with.
Okay, but this is not, I realized the lot is quite small, but, but this is not one where, where you're saying it's in compliance. This is one where you're asking for us, the zoning board of appeals, to grant you permission to go above the compliance number, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, this is Andy Port. I just wanted to note that I'm not sure if the member from the public, Holly McDonald's, is, is interested in speaking on this particular application, but we do have a hand raised in the audience.
Okay, thank you, Andy. I see and recognize Ms. Holly McDonald to, to, you can go ahead and unmute her microphone, please.
And Holly, you'll have to unmute on your end as well, if you'd like to speak or address the board.
If you can hear us, Ms. McDonald, there's a button bottom left of your screen which, which is mute and unmute. If you click on that, it should open up your mic for you.
We're not able to hear you, Holly. I'm not sure if you have unmuted yourself. It looks like you're still muted on your end.
You know, Andy, I wish there was a way for us to simply override that. It can be, it can be challenging if you're on a mobile device and such. But I guess that's just the, the, you know, the, the frailty of Zoom, I suppose.
Yeah, I guess that they wanted to make sure that people could individually mute themselves. So I have no way to.
No, no, I, yeah, I realize it's just, it's just interesting because we, we see that. Okay. Well, um, we can give it another moment for Ms. McDonald to attempt to try to unmute her mic, at which point we will have to, we'll have to press on. And so were there any other, were there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, this is Stephen Delisle. I just want to go back to the, the, the FAR issue. So as it was currently constructed, you are conforming for FAR, but the new structure will be non-conforming for the FAR, correct?
This is Andy Port. I, the applicant may wish to address that, of course, but I just wanted to note that we have an unusual provision. I would argue unusual provision in the Plum Island overlay district that allows the board to grant by special permit a relief or additional relief from that FAR that you noted that's sort of the baseline. I'm, I'm not sure that's a good idea as a land use practice on, on the island, but, but that is what we have on the books today. And so you're correct that it, it's above the baseline, but there was a special permit process, which is why the applicant is, partly why the applicant's before you.
Thank you, Andy, for, for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Okay, this is Mark Moore. Since we're on the FAR, I had a follow-up on that. The applicant mentioned in the narrative that it's not substantially more detrimental to go from twenty-one to thirty and that thirty is kind of in line with the rest of the neighborhood. And I didn't know if he had any numbers to back that up.
We don't have any empirical data that goes along with that, but I think in, in studying the neighborhood, it's, it's a pretty densely packed neighborhood. So I, I think if we were to, to go through the, the process of pulling the numbers together, that, that what we're proposing here isn't, isn't overly dense for the site.
I would agree. It's dense for sure.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. We can go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations. And again, with respect to deliberations, keep in mind that this is a special permit for non-conformities to demolish and rebuild the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home. So if you could tailor the deliberations around the criteria, supporting special permit, that would be great.
All right, this is Mark Moore. I'll kick off on the deliberation part. And I think it sounds like other members are having the same issue with, with the FAR question. It is a dense neighborhood and it's, it's a situation where without knowing that number per se, it's kind of tough to say, for me to say that, well, just winging it, it looks like it's all the same. So I was struggling that myself. You know, an increase of forty-three percent there and then, you know, doubling in height also brings in some, some size scale and massing issues for me. So, you know, the PIOD allows for the additional bedroom and going up a floor. And it's definitely, it's in, it's in line with the height that is allowed. But the, you know, the density, the, the neighborhood where it's set up, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the size and the height of this.
Yeah, if I could chime in, this is Ken Swanton. I mean, I, I also asked about the FAR question. You know, and I'm fine with, I'm, I actually, I think it's an attractive design, but it's a very small lot. And that's, I think, why the FAR is going up so much. And I, I have concerns about the fragile resource there. And, you know, I think development's fine, but when you go that much up on the FAR, I, I personally, I have some, some concerns about that in, in the PIOD, affecting the PIOD as a whole.
This is Stephen Delisle. I also had some, some thoughts on the, on the FAR. And I'm, I'm wondering if, I know from, from our, our staff report that this matter still has to go before the conservation commission. And I'm wondering if that, if the conservation commission's view on, on this might shed some light for us as the zoning board of appeals on this, on this issue with respect to the, the PIOD itself. as the zoning board of appeals on this, on this issue with respect to the, the piad itself. We do have an increase in the FAR that is, that, you know, it is substantial. Taking into account that it is a, a smaller lot, it would be, it would be nice to have some data with respect to of the FAR of other structures in the, in the neighborhood. That, that might be helpful to, to augment the data that we have before us.
I would agree that would be helpful. That was kind of, you know, definitely back to the question I was, that I was concerned with by saying it. I just hate the eyeball, because I know it's dense and I don't want to look at the raw number, but, you know, comps would be very helpful.
This is Rachel Webb. I'm just noting in the staff report that it says that the applicant has confirmation, the structure is in the AO zone, and as such, the applicant has reduced the building footprint to comply. How much was the building footprint reduced by? Is that, is that from what you were saying, the FAR was previously point 3.6 and now it's just point 3?
That is correct, yes. So, so we did, we reduced the footprint to come in compliance with the AO requirement. We went through the process of digging into and making sure that the, the lot was located within the AO zone. And then the conservation commission has jurisdiction to the wetlands protection overlay to, to restrict redevelopment to 20% increase in the footprint. So we went back to the drawing board and, and reduced our footprint to come into compliance with that requirement, which also shrunk the, the square footage of the building. And if I might take, take a second to sort of address some of your size and height concerns. You know, I, I think it's, it's fair to note the height concern. But because of the district and because of conservation commission requirements and flood hazard requirements, we have to lift the building up out of the flood zone, causing us to push the first floor living space up above the floodplain. So, so while the building is definitely going to get taller, we're going to be in compliance with the height. So I don't really think that that's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and, and shouldn't really be a, a big concern for the board here. And then as far as the, the size and the FAR, you know, we're, we're really combating a small lot and a small existing building too. The existing building clocks in at around 800 square feet and the second floor is, is totally within the, the eaves of the roof. So, you know, we're, we're certainly going to be looking at an increase in, in floor area here for our design, which is naturally going to make our FAR go up. So, you know, well, well, again, I think we are certainly increasing. I, I don't think we're increasing to a point that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, any other questions? I'm sorry, any, anything else in deliberations? And again, just sort of guiding our deliberations, because this is a special permit for non-conformities. As our staff report also outlines, the board must find that the proposed change will not cause the structure to be within 10 feet of the sideline, more than two stories, more than 35 feet in height, as shown on the plans, and that the board will also, must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming use or structure or the piad itself. So kind of a cumbersome and technical criteria, but that's the two, those are the two prongs. We must guide ourselves by, with a special permit. Any other deliberations? Okay, hearing none. Before I close this portion of the meeting, I, I've got a question for Mr. McShara. Having heard kind of the, the comment of some of the members of the board with respect to concerns, this is a sort of the apropos moment that you as the applicant should, should consider your sort of, your decision point on whether you may wish to take a, a moment and a pause and a step back if, if you feel, you know, that it's, there's still some questions that might prevent a four board member affirmative vote. You, you know, you don't want to sort of step irrevocably through the, through the motion seconding and a vote. If the vote's not affirmative, you would, you would be barred up to two years from reapplying to the board without a substantial change to the, to the proposal. So we as a board have historically offered applicants that are sort of, you know, hearing the, you know, the tea leaves or seeing the tea leaves, so to speak, to have an opportunity to, you know, to take a, take a step back and revisit, maybe take another run at, but this is entirely up to you. I just wouldn't want you to sort of move through this without, without that, that quick note.
Yes, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. And so we'll, it's also my understanding from conversations with folks in the zoning office that it may be prudent to wait for the conservation commission to weigh in on this project and make sure that we are in compliance with them as well, which I think would also give us an opportunity to go and, and get some of this data that the board is looking for. I think I would just like a little bit of assurance that, that the height is going to be less of an issue because that is, is compliant with the requirement. And, and that, that we're really looking to establish that the FAR is, is in keeping with the neighborhood.
Okay, that's a fair question. I, I could certainly pull the board as an attempt to try to, you know, move this along. Members of the zoning board, having heard from the applicant, Mr. McShara, who's contemplating asking the board to consider a, to consider entertaining a motion to continue the matter so that the conservation commission can, can weigh in and opine and, and maybe render a decision with some more info. Is there any member of the board that is, that is, that, that feels that he or she would remain trouble-stopped in, no matter what the, the CONCOM might decide with respect to the height? Is height an issue that is kind of a, a deal breaker for anyone? So that Mr. McShara can take that into consideration?
Mr. Chair, it's Mark Moore. I, I totally, you know, would agree that having to get above floodplain is, is a big reason for the height. So for me, the, the issue, height, yes, one. But more importantly, I just, I would really be helpful to see the comps on the FAR, which would help put into, you know, a good, a, a good standing where this falls in, in the neighborhood, because again, it is dense and it is going to move the number if you move it, if you move the size of the building a little bit. So yeah, I think, I think the delay in getting the comp number on the FAR would be enough information for me to, to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else have any thoughts?
This is Stephen Delisle. I, I agree completely with Mr. Moore. The, it's the FAR number that I'd like to see with respect to the data of, you know, the surrounding properties. The, the height is not an issue for me. I think that under 11G4A, the height is, is, is compliant as proposed, in my view.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Anyone, any other member of the board wish to, to offer any thoughts on the height issue in the FAR?
I'll also chime in, this is Ken Swanton. Yeah, I have no problem with the height. The height's in compliance. In fact, I don't remember anybody bringing up height as an issue. So I, I think height's fine. My whole issue is with the FAR, I mean, and just in general, if we're going to allow FARs of 36 all over the piad, that's going to be a very different Plum Island.
Okay, Ms. Webb?
Yeah, I'll chime in. I'm in agreement with Mr. Swanton. I do not have an issue at all with the height. It is as proposed, under the height maximum for the ordinance. So that's not an issue for me. And I do agree with the previous comments about the FAR being, it would be great to see it in context of the neighborhood numbers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. And, you know, I, I agree with that as well. I'm, I'm unmoved by the, the height component because this is Plum Island. We understand the, the, the intervening, competing interests of floodplain and, and environmental conservation concerns, which we see out there routinely. I'll also note that it's very favorable that, you know, in such close quarters, especially in Plum Island, to hear, to hear no opposition from immediate neighbors speaks volumes about the contemplated impact. That moves me as well. So I'm in agreement. Mr. McShara, having heard that, it seems, it seems pretty clear that the board is, is kind of offering a little bit of their thinking, which is certainly in the spirit of what we do. Without any sort of marriage to a decision one way or the other, how do you wish to proceed, sir?
Yeah, and I appreciate the conversation tonight. And I think a good first step in, in presenting the project and, and hearing what you guys had to say about, about the proposal. We will ask for a continuance at this meeting and, and move over to the conservation commission effort and come back to you. I would assume, what, what meeting would we be able to come back to you guys on?
That is a great question. Caitlin, Andy, what would be, do we, when is the CONCOM meeting on this matter? And then what would be the most rational next opportunity we could bring, we could bring this application back?
Right, Ryan, are you before the commission on the 21st?
No, I believe we're going to be pushed into the beginning of August for conservation commission.
Right, so in that instance, you would be on the fourth, which is a week before the next zoning board of appeals meeting, which would make it tight to turn around any revised plans if needed. I'm wondering, in that instance, that you could ask for a continuance to the 11th of August, but given that that's tight, you may maybe make more sense to ask for a continuance to the 25th of August.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we go for the 11th? And then if need be, we need to adjust fire when, when we get there, we'll, we'll, we'll be sure to be in touch with your office and, and move it to the 25th, long before it's, it's an issue.
Okay.
I'll just need to know, Mr. McShara, I, I will likely be away and not, not able to participate in the August 11th meeting. Vice Chair Moore would step in and chair that meeting, but you would just be down one voting member. And that's, since I, I know that, I, I want to make sure I bring that out. That may be of no consequence, but it's, it's worth noting.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, all right. So having heard that, members of the board, do we have a motion to continue to the meeting of August 11th?
I'll make the motion to continue this application file number 2020-030 to the meeting of August 11th.
Mark Moore, seconded, or Delisle?
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Webb and seconded, was it Mr. Moore or Mr. Delisle?
It was a tie ball game.
I'm going to call that, I'm going to call that pitch, Mr. Moore pitch. So we'll, we'll say motions made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Moore. I'll just call the role on the motion to continue the matter to the meeting of August 11th. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Rob Chappetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries. The matter is continued to the meeting of August 11th. Thank you very much, Mr. McShara, and look forward to seeing you back on the 11th.
Thank you much.
Very good. Moving to the next matter in the public hearing, we have the application of John and Genevieve Blyer. Three Plummer Avenue in the matter of 2020-045. This is a special permit for non-conformities to demolish a side, single-story sunroom and reconstruct a two-story addition extending the pre-existing non-conforming side and rear yard setbacks. May we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you can hear me.
We can.
Very good. My, my name is John Blyler. Thank you for taking the time to, to hear us out tonight. I'm here with my wife Jenny and with our architect, Dave, Dave Stulzatz. I just want to make sure that Dave is unmuted as well, because I, I wouldn't be surprised if we need to tag team a bit.
It appears that he is.
Thank you very much. So John Blyler, Three Plummer Avenue, applying for a special permit for non-conformance. So essentially, what we'd like to do is, is remove an existing sun porch and build a modest two-story addition to the south of our house. It's an older home. It's a historic house. We've, we've been through hearings with the historic committee on, on July 1st, they issued a release permitting to work to, to go forward from their perspective. We're in the R2 zoning district. The porch that we'd like to remove was built in the 30s or 40s. It's a small sun porch, a little less than 100 square feet. And what we're proposing to do is, is replace it with a, a small two-story addition that, that would create an additional 156 square feet on the ground floor and an additional 213 square feet of living space on the second floor. So essentially what we're looking to do is extend our living room so that we can actually fit our family in the living room. It's an older home that doesn't have, have a closet space, so we're looking to, to get some closet space and then on the upstairs reorienting a bedroom and, and picking up some additional space as well. In terms of compliance with zoning, everything we're proposing is, is going to not add any new non-conformity, but there are some non-conformities to, to start with. It's a 10,000 square foot dimensional control. Our certified plot plan tells us that we have just over 7,500 square feet, 7,535 square feet. The dimensional control for the, for the front yard is meant to be 25 feet. We are 10.4 feet. For one of the two side yards, we're shy as well. It's meant to be 10 feet and we are 7.4 feet. For the other side yard, we're fine. And in the rear, we're a foot and a half shy as well. It's meant to be 25, but it's 23.5. So we've, we've moved into this home. We'd like to, again, expand a little bit. We worked very hard with, with Ben Nutter Architects and, and David in particular to come up with a, you know, a proposed plan that doesn't exasperate any of the, of the non-conformities. So where we were 7.4 feet from the, from the property bound, we, we still would be 7.4 feet from the property ground. You know, the conditions and circumstances of the lot don't, don't allow for us to pull it back in anymore. You know, again, it's an older home, but we, we worked very hard to, to not, you know, worsen any non-conformities with respect to lot coverage, floor area, height, open space, front side, rear, et cetera. So I think it's a nice project. It fits in with the neighborhood. Again, we, you know, we worked with our architect to, to ensure that it was in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood itself has, you know, it's kind of a mixed architectural neighborhood. There's a raised ranch directly across the street, several neighboring bungalows, older homes. The graphic that's on screen now shows the new additions. So were you to see my mouse, it's, if you go to the lower right-hand corner, that's the, that's the street view. There you go. So it's, it's on the left. That's the new addition that we'd be adding and replacing to replace the sunroom. The, the remainder of the house is the old 1854 house with a more recent condition from the prior owner. Off to the right is the image as you see it. So I, you know, if you'd like, we can walk through some of the drawings and, and plans. I think this and the certified plot plan pretty much say it all, but you know, again, we, we worked very hard. So there'll be no addition of a new non-conformity. The requested permit is consistent with the, the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and it certainly does not, you know, detract or in any ways detrimental to the neighborhood. So we, I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, Mr. Blalow, thank you very much. Was there anything else you wanted to add, or, or can we, would you like us to move, move forward?
Do you have any questions or concerns, or Dave, is there anything you'd like to add?
We do have a question about the status of the bulkhead and its, its impact on the rear yard setback, which we're hoping for a definitive answer from the board tonight on that.
I'm sorry, Dave, can you, how do you, how should, how do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Stulzatz.
Thank you, Stulzatz. Mr. Stulzatz, I, so as the architect, we'll, and we'll go through sort of our repertoire of trying to determine who among the attendees might wish to speak in favor or opposition. And then we'll go to questions from the board and then deliberations. But I, I'm sure that myself or members of the board would be happy to sort of flesh that out and try to determine what, if any, questions we have regarding the bulkhead. But let's move forward then, if that is the, the presentation, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing and.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add one, one item before we, we close that portion, thank you. We, we've knocked on the door of, of every neighbor immediately next door, two, two houses away, across the street. I don't know if anyone's in attendance or not. I didn't ask them to write letters or be in attendance, but we, we've discussed this addition with all neighbors and met no opposition whatsoever. Everyone said it was fine.
Excellent, thank you very much. And moving now to the, the section of public comment, does, is there anyone among the attendees who wishes to speak in support of the application? And if you do, we'll ask you to kindly just raise your hand virtually, and then just give your name and address for Ms. Joy, our note taker. And Mr. Blyler, I see your hand raised, but I suspect you, you, as the presenter, you've, you did, you, you, you've already said what you wanted us to know, or was there something else you wanted to add?
I'm not wise enough to know how to put it down.
No worries, people of us are actually, so no worries at all, okay. Anyone else, does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing no further hands raised, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Similarly, seeing no hands raised, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll go to questions from the board, for me, either Mr. Stolzatz or Mr. Blyler.
This is Mr. Moore, I just had one question, it looks like it's going to be easy to see by looking at the plans, but the house has been meticulously cared for, so I assume all the materials on the new addition are, you know, exactly in line with what you're using on the exterior.
That's absolutely correct, and we made that clear to the Historic Commission as well, that's, that's our objective, is to keep it, you know, make sure the addition is in keeping with the historic nature of the home.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, we will go to, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations. Now, keeping in mind, this is a special permit for nonconformities, so the criteria that the board must consider in, in evaluating is, this is, that, that there is no addition of a new nonconformity in order to grant the special permit for nonconformities, and that the proposed alteration will not create any new nonconformities. The second component of that, of course, is that the board must find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming use or structure.
Yep, this is Mark Moore, I'll jump off saying, you know, I'm totally in support of this with the Historical Commission giving the thumbs up, the addition is not creating any new nonconformities as presented, and it certainly wouldn't be substantially more detrimental, given the, the size and the appropriateness of the, the addition, so I can certainly support it.
This is Stephen Delisle, I agree with Mr. Moore, see that there's no addition of a new nonconformity, I think that if, if the bulkhead were an issue, it would have been flagged as a, as a new nonconformity, and that not being raised by our, our zoning administrator, I don't see that it is an issue for, for this board. So that's the first prong, and the second prong is surely passed by this project, that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, this looks like a very well-thought-out addition, well-keeping within the, the ethos of the existing structure and within the neighborhood as well. So I could support this project.
Okay, anyone else, anyone else wish to deliberate?
This is Ken Swanton, I think the other two colleagues summarized it quite well, I think it's a nice addition, I mean, it's not really an addition, a nice change to the house, I have no problem with it, it doesn't create any new problems, new, new nonconformities, nor is it more detrimental to the neighborhood.
This is Rachel Webb, I would like to echo my, my colleague's statements that I'm in support of this proposal, it's definitely not going to be creating any new nonconformities, and it's not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, it's an excellent presentation, and I'm in support.
Okay, have we heard from everyone, is any other member of the board wish to speak in deliberations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the application for the special permit for nonconformity?
Mark Moore, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for Three Plumber Ave., file number 2020-045.
Seconded by Mr. Delisle.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Delisle. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Channing?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is six in the affirmative, the motion carries, and the special permit for nonconformities is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Blyler and Mr. Stolzatz, and good luck to you.
Well, thank you, folks, very much, I appreciate your consideration, have a good summer and be safe.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
All right, members of the board, moving along to the final application before our board this evening, this is the matter of Marshview Realty LLC, care of James Conley, of the law firm of Conley and Conley. The application is for the property located at 5 Martha Street Dock in 2020-046. This is the dimensional variance to convey a portion of the parcel to a neighboring parcel resulting in a new nonconformity for rear and side yard setbacks, FAR lot coverage, lot size, and frontage. And I understand Attorney Conley is present to speak on behalf of Marshview Realty Trust, Attorney Conley.
Thank you, can you hear me now, am I unmuted?
We can.
Oh, good. So actually, our project is a much less complicated than the last couple. Basically, if you look at the plan, the owners of Martha Street property number five also bought at the same time, both these two lots came from the Federal Home Loan Bank Corporation, the property extending out to Nancy Street, this, so there's three basically Plum Island Beach Company lots that are sort of abutting, they're at issue here. The one in the far right, as you look at the plan on Nancy Street, it looks like from the lot, there's a lot of space beneath the house, but in fact, in reality, it's pretty much marshland now with the approaching marsh, and the right-hand side of the plan is just the basin and marshland. So what they would like to do is transfer that top lot 177, not change anything, but just transfer ownership from the ownership for, from Martha Street, from 5 Martha Street to Nancy Street, which then gives the house on Nancy Street parking, right now, I guess in the wintertime, it's very difficult, the street gets plowed by the city, it's a town street, but there's really nowhere to put the cars. So that kind of makes it easier to comply with the two lot, two car, lot, two car space requirement for each of the lots. So hardship really is that the, the, the marsh has kind of taken over part of the parking for Nancy Street, and this would basically restore the two parking spaces that are required. Martha Street has sufficient parking, so that's kind of what they want to do, nothing's really changing except the ownership of that unbuiltable lot, which is going to go from one lot to the other lot. So I don't know if the board has any questions, I believe the owners of the property are here, I think, I can't see them, but I believe they're here, Bill and Michelle Edwards, and they can speak as well for a couple minutes, answer any questions the board may have about the project. But it's really not complicated, it's just a transferred ownership in one of those original Plum Island Beach Company lots.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Conley, so hearing the closing of that present, of the presentation, we can go to anyone among the attendees who wishes to speak in support of the application? Seeing, I see a hand of Bill Edwards.
Yes. I, I am the owner of both of those lots, and I bought Nancy Street in 2011, and it's presently rented out. Bought Martha Street in 2013, and it's not rented presently. The tenants on Nancy Street are having difficulty with parking, and since that nonbuildable lot is contiguous with the Nancy Street home, we are just asking if that lot can be adjoined to Nancy Street and separated from the Martha Street lot.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Edwards, anyone else wish to, and I apologize, sir, was there anything else?
No, no.
And I'm Michelle Edwards, and I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards as well. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing no further hands, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no hands, we'll go, I'm sorry, we have a hand of Mr. Dan Tully, Mr. Tully.
Yes, and frankly, I'm, I'm not sure whether I'm in support or against this, this motion, but knowing that the, this particular plot being transferred from, or being associated with one lot to another, what that does to free up the Nancy Street property, the two-story property, to, to now build a larger home on that, on that lot, that would be our main concern. You know, on its own, lot 177 appears to be not buildable, but combined with 177A, does that become, does that affect what can be built on 177A? We know that there's some renovation that needs to be done there, and, you know, combining those two lots, does that renovation now become a complete demo and reconstruction? So those would be our concerns. We know that there are two cars parked on 177A regularly without much, without any trouble, so I'm, I'm not sure that, as presented as a parking issue, that that is an accurate portrayal of what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tully, again Chairman Rob Champetti. So Attorney Conley, you, you heard the comments, and I'd just like to, you know, in the spirit of sort of how we run this board, you know, we like to delve in when we can to try to address questions or issues and give everyone, you know, full view of an opportunity to speak or address, you heard the comments of, of an abutter, Mr. Dan Tully, is there anything you wish to offer to address that?
Well, I, I think that the required square footage is 12,000 for that zoning area, and if you add those together, it's still, that's, you don't have 12,000, so they couldn't do anything, really without coming back before the board to get approval from the board. I don't think that Edwards have any plans to do anything, but it's not unlike by adding that other, but the whole thing becomes a conforming lot, it's still not conforming, it's more nonconforming than it was, but nothing could be done there without coming back before the Board of Appeals and showing hardship anyway, so, which I think realistically is very unlikely to be granted, so, so I don't really see that as a big concern, because either way, it's got to come back before the board if there's an issue.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Conley, and just sort of as a point of information, Mr. Tully, for what it's worth, Attorney Conley's not incorrect, and any, that lot does not become conforming in any way, as, as I see it, just as it stands, and I, and my colleagues may feel similarly or differently, but I feel fairly confident that for sure, any proposed alteration in the future would, would absolutely have to come back before our board as well as protect, perhaps other boards in addition to our board, and I'm not sure if that addresses your question, it's merely just a reflection out loud.
It, 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 it addresses a portion of our concerns, I think we're, we're surprised that this was presented as a, a parking issue as opposed to an ability to sell the 176 parcel minus the 177, because that couldn't be sold with it. But regardless, if this, if, if this would come back to the board, if any new construction was being done, then that, that's fine, we, I have no opposition to that transfer.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Tully, anyone else wish to speak in opposition or wish to speak at all?
I'm Michelle Edwards, I would like to speak, we have absolutely no intention of doing anything on that lot.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Edwards, anyone else wish to speak in support, in opposition, or just simply speak with respect to the application as we have it thus far? All right, seeing no new hands, I don't believe we see any new hands, I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll move to questions from the board.
I have a question, it's Rachel Webb, I have a couple of questions, actually, would Dan Tully please inform us of his address, is he a direct abutter to this proposed project?
I am, I'm at 154 Old Point, lot 178.
Oh, great, thank you. And for the applicant, could you please talk about what, what the type of use is on that lot 177 on Nancy Street, because the building shape on the drawing that we're looking at currently is very long and narrow, I just, I'm not sure, is that residential, is it a garage, or what is it?
It says a one-story wood shed.
It's a wood shed?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no one living there currently?
No, it's like a storage shed, yeah, it belonged to the house on lot 176, but no, it's not, there's, there's nobody living there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Mr. Delisle, I, I have a, a comment, I, I think there's a technical infirmity with the request entirely. The request is for a variance with respect to the property at 5 Martha Street, right, which is lot 176, correct?
Yes.
But all your support for, the reasons for which the variance should be granted by this board relate to lot 177A, and I don't think that that meets the statutory requirement of Chapter 40, Section, excuse me, Chapter 48, Section 10, or the variance section of, of the, the NZO X-10H6C. So I think that there's a, there's a problem here in that one plus one doesn't equal two, you need a variance to chop off 177A from 177, 176, but you haven't provided any reasons or any basis for this board to grant that relief, and we can't grant that relief unless we can specifically find that the statutory requirements have been met. Mr. Conley, can you respond to that?
Well, I mean, are you thinking that we would need to request a variance for 177A in some fashion instead? I mean, the hardship flows.
I don't think, I don't think that's the case, I think you need to provide a basis to leave a, leave lot 177, 176 as a, as a lot that is nonconforming, I believe.
Well, I mean, the basis, well, of course, it makes lot 177A much more conforming, but...
But the variance is for lot 176, you're requesting a variance for lot 176.
Well, for the transfer, that transfer, that's correct, but the transfer is basically making lot 177A more nonconforming, the property's owned by 176, not by 177A. So, I mean, we could basically request from 177A, but we, it's really, I mean, maybe we'd have to do two, put both parcels in requesting the hardship, I mean, the hardship flows from the parking and the, and the wetlands on a different lot, so it's no way to get that.
That's the problem, I think, that it flows from, the hardship is on a different lot, you have to have a hardship on lot 176, I think, to get the variance, unless I'm reading this incorrectly.
So, yeah, this, this is Andy Port, I would agree with that interpretation, I think if the applicant could provide a response to, you know, some sort of narrative to address the hardship on lot 176, that might be a better scenario than referencing a hardship on lot 177A.
Well, there is no problem in one sense, because they're basically, they're not, they have parking already for that, so it's really to benefit lot 177A that the transfer would be made, but it doesn't seem right to me that there's no way to transfer that parcel to 177A to increase the parking for 177A and make it more, more conforming than it is now.
This is Andy, again, I just wanted to interject there, that I think the reason that... member Delisle's raised that concern is because it does still leave lot 176 non-conforming. And the purposes of the merging of the lots, which you see by that symbol there, is, is to ensure that when people own adjacent lots in common ownership, that they're used together to comply with zoning. So that's the reason why I think the member has raised that concern that there needs to be a reference to a hardship for lot 176.
I guess any of the question would be basically, how do you, how do you do that? How do you make it? If it's going to make lot 177A more conforming than it is now, how would you do that? Does the zoning not allow that to happen? I mean, are they stuck, is 177A stuck with this lot that doesn't have any parking when it can get it from the property next door? I mean, I'm talking about an unbuildable lot, right?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting I have any concern about that particular, you know, what you're trying to do here. It's just that he's correct in that the hardship has to be applicable to the land in question. So that's why I suggest that you, it may be better for you to provide some sort of narrative to that effect for the board's consideration as opposed to arguing that the hardship is sufficient on lot 177A.
Well, what would you suggest, Andy, in that regard?
Again, it's, it's not our, you know, position to advocate on behalf of applicants. You know, that's, unfortunately, that's a construct of the state statute, you know, chapter 48 is referenced. So that's up to the applicant to provide some, you know, to address that.
If, if, this is, this is Chairman Champetti. I'm going to just jump in for a second. Attorney Conley, I think what might be the best course of action and next steps might be to take a pause and a step back to kind of discuss offline with the planning office, how best to script, because really, it's a matter of, and Andy's not incorrect, as, as is Mr. Delisle. The board has to have, you know, very specifically articulated rationale upon which it could, if it so chose, upon which it could pin a decision, you know, to find a hardship and therefore find in the affirmative for a variance. So the hardship piece is, is fairly rigid and strictured for us. So having something in the body of the presentation that speaks specifically to the criteria, the legal criteria of hardship under chapter 48, as to lot 177 versus as to lot 177A is, I think what is, what we're hearing from other members is a, a little bit of a missing piece. So curable, at least insofar as trying to attempt to articulate that. But that, that's what I think might be the best thing to try to do.
If we could withdraw our request at the present time, and we'll talk to that planning office and see if we can come up with something that would work.
But this is Andy again. I apologize. Might I suggest a continuance as opposed to withdrawal of the application, just to be clear?
Yeah, and Jim, I would say you want to move to continue versus withdraw. Withdrawal would require the applicant to have to re, renotice and republish. A continuance we routinely grant for refinement of information and, and it's kind of a further movement forward, but.
Okay, that would be fine. Thank you. Thank you.
So, so what, what hearing? So we have the 11th of August, and we also have the 25th of August. Do you have a preference?
Not really, no. I don't know if the Edwards have any preference.
Either one is fine, Jim. Thank you.
So, yeah, whatever works out for the board is fine.
Okay, I'll note that the board would be light, one member in me. I, I'll be again away and not, not able to attend August 11th.
Why don't we do it on the 25th? Because I, I think we need to talk to the planning office in some detail about this issue, actually.
Okay.
Because, you know, we went, we went there initially. It wasn't really raised in that connection, but, I mean, I, so we'll have to talk and see if there's some mechanism for making that transfer that makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, this is Andy again. And just to be clear, we can provide you with some sample narratives for other applications that have been submitted to the board, you know, if you're to sort of consider in drafting something for the board here. I think it, it's not that the mechanism is impossible. It's just that the, the board needs some sort of narrative to that effect upon which to grant the reliefs.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Well, hold on. We're going to just do a quick vote on the motion and then we'll, we'll get it squared away. So do we have a motion from the members of the board to continue this application for a dimensional variance on 5 Martha Street to the meeting of August 25th?
I'll make the motion to continue this 5 Martha Street variance to the meeting of August 25th.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
All right, motion's made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the, the role, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Channan?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries matters continued August 25th. Thank you, Attorney Conley, and also to Mr. and Mrs. Edwards for your, your patience this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Very good. We'll, we'll see you on the 25th.
Okay.
Okay, members of the reported zoning board of appeals, that concludes our published meeting agenda for the meeting of July 14th, 2020. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, and you can just respond with an auditory vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Gretchen, thank you. And Caitlin and Andy, thank you. And members of the board, thank you.
Nice job. Again, thank you.
Evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody, everyone.
Bye.